All right. Good afternoon, everyone. We are now convening the House Committee on Higher Education. It is Friday, February 5th, 2025, five minutes after 2:00 P. M. And we are here not at the State Capitol, but at beautiful Bachmann Hall. I'm really excited to have the hearing on campus today. You know, this is really a special moment for me, not just because we're bringing the legislative process directly to the university, but as a proud UH alumnus, I would have never imagined that one day I'd be here not as a student, but as a legislator hosting an official hearing. I want to extend a huge mahalo to the I T staff of both the State House and the UH for their hard work in making today's hearing possible. Their efforts ensure that we can engage with the university community in a meaningful way and continue important discussions about the future of higher education in Hawaii. So mahalo to everyone who's joining us here today, both in person and via Zoom. Members, before we begin on our agenda with 11 items, just a few housekeeping announcements. Restrooms are right out the door and to the right, and these microphones require us to hit the button. So once you see this red light turn on, that means it's on. When you're done, you can hit it, it'll turn off. So before we begin, just wanted to acknowledge the heavy hitters from the university that are in the room today. First of all, of course, President Wendy Hensel. Would you mind coming up and just saying a few words?
Aloha.
Aloha.
So I have to agree with you, Representative Garrett. There's something special about coming back to your alma mater in a position where you can do good for the people at the university. And I particularly appreciate that you all are here today. You have in your hands the power to assist or to harm the people in the room. And so it is important that we spend time together in our place so that you know how important we are to the state and hopefully to the legislature as well. So it's really a huge mahalo from me to say thank you for taking the time. I know it's logistically challenging to move everything, but it's very special to us that you would come to our space, and we welcome you with open arms here. So thank you.
Thank you for having us today. Okay, so with that, members will go to our agenda. First up today is House Bill 542 relating to the University of Hawaii Promise Program. This bill expands the Hawaii Promise Program to provide scholarships for the unmet needs of qualified students at any four-year university of Hawaii campus who meet certain criteria and appropriate funds. First, we have the University of Hawaii System testifying in support. VP Halbert.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thanks. I'd like to echo President Hensel's thanks for you coming here to be with us. We, of course, for this bill stand on our written testimony. I would highlight that we have added to the end of this testimony a possible alternative, which would be to look at transfer opportunities for the two-year to the four-year as part of a refined Hawaii Promise. But please feel free to ask, answer, I'll be free to answer any questions that you might have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, University of Hawaii Professional Assembly. Not present. Okay, testifying in support. Up next, the University of Hawaii Student Caucus. Ronald Sturgis, Chair. Testifying in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee on Higher Education. My name is Ronald Sturgis. I am here testifying on behalf of the University of Hawaii Student Caucus. I am the current Chair of the University of Hawaii Student Caucus. We are the representative organization for the some 50-odd thousand University of Hawaii students here, and we are here in support, strong support of House Bill 542 to extend Hawaii Promise to the four-year universities. Firstly, as many of us here in this room may know, cost is a huge barrier to education, especially here in Hawaii where cost of everything is just rising daily. And so anything that can help aid that issue with the rising costs is going to be a massive benefit to our students and prospective students alike. Secondly, Hawaii needs skilled workers, skilled and educated workers. It's no surprise that our job market has been suffering some serious issues with the mass exodus of working-age adults to the mainland or other places to find more affordable opportunities for both education, housing, and easier work. So by helping lower at least one of those barriers, we can help keep more people inside the state, working, living, and learning. Lastly, this is an investment in our future. Let's, let's be real here. This is where the future leaders are going to come from, future people who will be one day sitting on this table with some of you or who may end up taking your seat in however many years. Hey, I'm not that ambitious, don't worry. But this is the future. This is where we build it, and it's time we start really recognizing that by putting that investment into these seeds that will grow into beautiful, beautiful Leahuas. That was trying to be funny. Anyway, I really hope you guys consider supporting 542 and what it means to the university, what it means to students like me, and to the students who will see this recording at some point in their lives. Thank you. Mahalo. I'm also available for questions.
Thank you. Very well said. Up next, Angelica Somera. I have to say, this is the coolest part, having actual students come to testify and join us today.
Okay, I have to, I'm short, I'm sorry. Anyway, aloha, Chair, aloha, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Mahalo for the opportunity to provide testimony. My name is Angelica Somera, and I am a student at Honolulu Community College. I am submitting this testimony in strong support of House Bill 542. The cost of attendance stands as a substantial barrier to higher education. Many students, including myself, rely on financial assistance to pursue our academic endeavors without taking on financial debt or working a multitude of jobs that may interfere with our studies. Without financial support, I can confidently say that I would not be able to pursue a higher education, and I am sure a plethora of fellow students in need of assistance share this burden. I am raised from a low-income family. My parents dreamed of being able to comfortably pay for me and my sister's college, but the financial hardships stood like an unyielding wall between us and their wishes. So I am set in my resolve to graduate without debt and standing on my own feet rather than relying on my parents, who have already given more than their share of sacrifice. I can confidently say that I will take advantage of this scholarship as I move forward to a four-year college to achieve my bachelor's. And beyond supporting individual students, investing in this scholarship is an investment towards Hawaii's future. This scholarship has shown to increase student credit completion and student graduation rate at the community college level, and I have no doubt that it'll pave the same path for those pursuing a four-year degree. This scholarship opens the door to higher education, making college more accessible as more students pursue their academic dreams. We can shape a skilled workforce, one that strengthens Hawaii and helps our island thrive. I humbly ask the committee to vote in favor of this bill. Thank you very much for your time, and I am open for any questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, members, please also know we have another testimony of support from an individual. Is there anyone in the room wishing to testify? Anyone via Zoom? Seeing none, members, any questions? House Bill 542. Yes, Representative Keela.
Is there, they may not testify, but is there anybody from the University Financial Aid Office able to ask or answer a question? Anyone familiar with financial aid on behalf of the university?
I'm not sure I can answer your questions. We also have Associate Vice President Farah Marie Gomes on Zoom, and so she may also be able to answer some questions about financial aid.
Do you mind lifting your microphone up just a little, please? Perfect. I, I think my question now is, so when we think about expanding the Hawaii Promise Program to other students, is there data that you folks have available that students who are receiving the Hawaii Promise Program now, in the sense, I mean, I don't, we don't need their names, but are they these folks that are 100% unmet need Pell Grant eligible? Are they independents or even emancipated from their families so that they're able to access other different loans? Do you folks have that data?
That would be a question for the community colleges, because of course, they're the ones that are running the two-year program. I think that the answer is it could be all of the above. And in, at the two-year level, some of the students who would be helped are not, the Pell Grant would cover tuition, right? Because the Pell is enough to cover the CC tuition. But there would be then this question of indirect costs. So there's some tension between the direct cost, which is covered by the two-year program, and indirect cost, which is a more comprehensive view of what total cost of attendance is.
Okay, then maybe that's a good framework for my next question. If this was implemented at the university level, do you folks have potential data impact right now that how many students would actually be able to expand or qualify for that, that unmet need?
For the four-year campuses?
Yes.
Yes, we do have that data, and so I can give it to you, I can give you the data for all of the different campuses.
If that's possible.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Representative Keela. Members, any other questions? Yes, Rep. Woodson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, University of Hawaii. Thank you again for being here. And so it was alluded to by one of the testifiers, but do you, as a university, have any data or metrics that demonstrate that students that participate in last-dollar programs actually have an increased return on graduation rates?
We, we don't, how would we put that? We have done studies on return on, return on investment for degree, people who achieve a degree from the University of Hawaii. We didn't match those to people who did last-dollar Pell Grant or Pell Grant eligible. However, in the, in the analysis of the return on investment for the degrees that you get from the University of Hawaii, one of the findings was that those individuals who are from the lowest socioeconomic groups found similar rates of postgraduate return as everyone else, so ultimately breaking cycles of poverty and achieving a far better income over time. So if you think about it in terms of how that would impact students who are Pell-eligible going to college, for especially the degrees that end with, culminate in a bachelor's degree or an associate of science degree, it would ultimately impact them in a positive way. But it's not a one-to-one correl, I mean, it's not a one-to-one causality, right? We can show you over time that that is the case. And send you the study if you haven't seen it. It's really interesting.
Yeah, please do, if you can send it to Chair. Thank you for that. And just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, is there any direct positive correlations between those students that participate in these types of programs and increased graduation rates directly?
I'm sorry, could you, could you? Could you repeat your question? I'm sorry.
Is there a, any studies of direct positive correlations between students that participate in these last-dollar programs and increased graduation rates?
Yes, and the two-year report that you, is submitted annually, does include all of that data. And so I can't, the phone here is a little small, but we can, we can show that and we can send you those reports if you haven't seen that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rep. Woodson. Rep. Capella.
The light's not red. Is it?
Oh, on the top.
Oh, on the very top, okay. I, I'm curious about, how many students are we losing by not allowing this, not, not expanding? How many students that want to be able to come to the four-year university setting from the community colleges as outlined so beautifully by some of our earlier testifiers, Ms. Somera? I'm just curious how many students we're losing by not implementing something like that.
It's always hard to prove the counterfactual, because we don't know what we're, what we're losing in the sense that, we don't know what they would have planned to do. But we do know that 10% of the Hawaii Promise students currently transfer. We know that if they do choose to go on to a four-year degree, it is far more expensive than it would be to, once they've finished their community college. I would anticipate that if we were able to expand to the four years, we would see the numbers of students interested in transferring and completing their education at a four-year to increase. What we have done in the data, which we'll be providing, is to look simply at the students who are already at four-year institutions, who would be eligible for the program. And that was what we use to base our anticipated cost on. So it's hard to prove who, who, who would have done something had they had the opportunity, but if that makes sense.
Is there, built into the Hawaii Promise Program currently, is there any follow-up on the participants who utilize the program that as they exit the program from, from community college, if they've graduated or not, if they would have chosen? Because I think that's a really good way.
Yeah, that question. Yeah, I don't think we do any exit surveys in terms of what they would have done had they had access to this. But we do have information about the graduation rates and the success rates of students who are in Hawaii Promise, and it is all overwhelmingly positive.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rep. Capella. Just one question for me before we proceed. And I note in your testimony, and you said yourself, you know, one potential compromise is to look at limiting the pool of eligible applicants for this. And in your testimony, you say this bill has a potential to reach nearly 5,000 students. If we were to narrow the scope, which candidly, I'm not willing to concede at this point, what would that number look like? From 5,000, what would it go down to?
Well, and thank you for not willing to concede that point, because I do believe that there is enormous benefit in continuing to look at the four years more comprehensively. But as I was just noting about, there's about 3,000, a little over 3,000 students who have accepted Hawaii Promise at the community colleges. So 10% of those have transferred into a four-year campus. So that's around what we're looking at. It's a far smaller number, of course, than, but I would also say that we will probably see enhanced numbers of transfer if we were to have a four-year promise.
Okay, and I believe the approximate price tag for the full expansion is about 12 million?
Yes, and that's if you include the number of potential eligible students across all of the four-year campuses. So there's a breakdown, and I, and when I, we provide the data, we can provide the breakdown by campus.
Okay, and again, not willing to concede this narrower scope, but if we did do that, how much would that cost?
I can do the math for you. I can do the math for you right here, but we can get you that cost.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 840. This bill is relating to the University of Hawaii Athletics, appropriate money to athletic departments of the University of Hawaii. Up first, we have the University of Hawaii at Manoa. A.D. Mannan, testifying in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, representatives, for the opportunity to testify in support of House Bill 840. In addition to what is written, we stand on our written testimony, but in addition to what we have written, I'd also like to mention the, as the direct correlation that the fringe benefits has on the salaries and that continue to rise, it sometimes serves as a deterrent for us to be able to hire quality coaches and quality staff, and that has a direct effect on the services that we provide to our student athletes. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have the University of Hawaii at Hilo via Zoom.
Aloha, Chair Garrett, Vice Chair Amato, and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, albeit virtually. I also appreciated the opportunity of visiting with you in person on campus last December. In the interest of time, we will go ahead and stand on our written testimony in support of HB 840. However, I am here for any comments or questions that you might have. Mahalo.
Thank you, A.D. And that's all the scheduled testifiers we have. Is there anyone in the room wishing to testify? Seeing none, anyone via Zoom? Seeing none, either member's questions, House Bill 840. Yes, Rep. Lachica, please proceed.
You, just wanted to thank Chair for the opportunity to host our committee for, on both-site visits at UH Hilo as well as Manoa prior to session. This question is for, I guess, Director Maan. If, hi. If you can just... If you can just elaborate what this funding would help, would help cover what's currently in the budget and what, what was Governor's decision and what this funding in the budget, in this bill, would help cover for your department? That was possibly either not funded or funded in the Governor's budget.
Absolutely. So this budget, the $3.2 million request is for a recurring to be part of the base budget. I think, I believe it used to be, but we're having to come back every year and ask individually for the $3.2 million that help covers our women's athletic sports in regards to travel and operational things like recruiting, team travel, and nutrition and things like that. The other part of it was the 43 positions, which I, which I kind of explained a little bit. And then $400,000 of that is for, request for Alston Awards. And Alston is something that we're allowed to give to every student athlete, up to $5,980 to every student athlete. The maximum amount that we would be able to give is $2.6 million, based on the athletes that we have. It is not, it is not part of financial aid, it's completely separate. It's based on the student-athlete qualifying. They have to meet certain educational, I mean, requirements to be able to qualify to receive the funds. But we are not asking for the full 2.6, we are asking for 400,000 of that to be able to enhance our awards in that area. And then lastly, the nutrition ask for 857,000 is actually a new thing that we're trying to provide, a fueling station in the newly renovated weight room that we have down in athletics, thanks to all of you that helped fund that. Thank you, by the way. But it's a fueling station that is an industry standard across all FBS schools, where you walk in and you can work out and you can get nutrition. Right now, we're funding that with, individual sports programs are having to raise money and fundraise to get protein powder and be able to make protein shakes and provide nutrition for them. We also have donations from Diotani Produce, who give us, you know, fruits and Metal Gold, who provide drinks for us. But it is, it is an industry standard that we are trying to provide because it's a new fueling station. I hope that answers your question.
No, no, thank you. I know, and I know it's not in this bill, it's different capital improvement-like requests, but we did get a chance to walk through the visiting team's locker room, and that was, that was pretty sad. And I really hope that you're given an opportunity in the next year or in the next couple of years to be given that funding to get the renovations that you need.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate that very much. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Members, any other questions? Yes, Rep. Keela.
Adie, I have a question for you. So it was just noted recently by our House Finance Chair that without some of the overhead costs that is usually incurred by University of Hawaii Athletics for the first time, that you folks actually made money here on campus by hosting the football program without having to face the cost of going to a stadium. So my question is, when you look at understanding your interim position about athletics as a whole across the university systems, are there any duplicative costs that you folks could potentially bring inside the campus instead of having to go out?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding your question.
So cherry on the sheet, I shared because you didn't have to pay for a stadium. For the first time, you folks made money off of athletics. And so my question is then, in the way, on other sports programs that exist throughout the university, as you folks go outside for some things, is there other ways to kind of duplicate that same thing of having the university that holds more sports programs that we don't have to potentially do so much allocations?
Understood. So we're, we are trying to figure out a way to actually balance the budget, which we have for the past two years. Football has not actually balanced. Football did make money, but when we moved from Aloha Stadium to campus, that incurred a net loss of about $1.7 million moving to campus. Because there's added expenses for football, we have to bring in portable toilets and we have to hire a bunch of people. Whereas at Aloha Stadium, that was not the case. We also have parking, a lot more parking at Aloha Stadium that we could, we could use as revenue source. So we do manage to balance the budget, but across the board, there are, there are ways to be able to bring in more money, I think is what you're asking about revenue streams. So we are looking into some of those things with our ticketing structure, and maybe we can induce, I know the University of Tennessee induced a talent fee on there to help pay for some of their expenses. We're looking into things like that. We're also looking at, obviously, fundraising. And, and there's opportunities in the NIL space right now that we're evaluating to maybe make, to maybe produce a revenue stream there as well.
Thank you, Chair. You know, that's a good segue. So regarding the appropriations here, none of that would be used for NIL?
No.
Okay. And then last question. The contract you folks have is still with Under Armour?
So, no, Under Armour...
Is that fully forgotten?
Under Armour bought out their contract when they got into their troubles, I think it was two or three years ago. And then we have been with Adidas for the last two or three years.
And what is that contract, though?
That contract is up on June 30th, but we are in negotiations...
2025?
Correct. But we have also, we have already solidified a contract, and we haven't, we haven't announced it yet officially, so I'm not sure that. But, but there is a contract in place to, to take over on July 1st.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rep. Keela. Members, any other questions? Just have a few for you, Adie. That's okay. You mentioned the Alston Awards. Is this different from the Special Talent Scholarship, or is it the same?
It is, it is completely different. Special Talent waivers are part of the way that the university helps fund our scholarships. So those are Special Talent waivers. Special Talent means athletics, basically, because, you know, so, so it is different, to answer your question.
Thank you. And then Rep. Keela did mention NIL. And, you know, we just had the college football championships, and it was noted that Ohio State University, the Ohio State, spent nearly 20 million this past year to construct their team. What is the current NIL budget for the university?
We are actually evaluating that right now, because right now NIL is run through collectives on, outside the university. On July 1st, NIL needs to run through the university, and we are preparing for that. So once, once it is run through the university, we'll have a better handle on that, and we're in the process of securing all of that and organizing all of that right now.
Do you kind of have a goal in mind as to what you want to get to?
$20 million.
That would be awesome. Okay, let's see here. Maybe this is a question for CFO Young regarding the base budget issue. Some of us are fairly new to the legislature, and I know there's a reference here made that this, at one point, this was in the base budget, but somehow it became out of the base budget. Could you just educate us on how that happened and when that happened?
Okay, so related to the athletic funding, back sometime, I believe in 2018 or 19, $4 million was appropriated from the legislature to UH Athletics, appropriated to System, UH System, which is technical, UH 900. That is not a campus. That's, that's the university system. So that $4 million was, was directed to be distributed to the program or to the campuses that do have athletics. So 3.2 million of the $4 million was distributed to UH Manoa. 800,000 of the $4 million was distributed to UH Hilo. And it was that way, that was the initial appropriation year. The subsequent year, that amount by normal process was requested to be included into the base. Into the base means, that's the, the bulk appropriation that the legislature approves each year. And every subsequent year, it's presumed that it's, it just renews. And all of our discussions that we have during session are basically the additive or subtractive measures from the, from new initiatives. But at some point in time, I believe it was right around, just pre-pandemic, the legislature took that $4 million out of the base, but did appropriate it in that year singularly. So it was, it was the same money appropriated, but not recurring. And since that time, for the, at least the last three-plus years, each year, the legislature has appropriated this $4 million to UH in the same fashion, but it is not recurring, meaning it is not in the base. Each year, it requires to be deliberated on and re-appropriated by the legislature. So this request is to put it into the, I'm sorry, our budget request, not this bill. Our budget request, which this bill mirrors, would be to put it into the base, meaning have it be set as recurring in the base. It previously was in the base. For all intents and purposes, it has been subsequently appropriated each year ever since, so it's just to put it into the base.
Thank you, thank you for the explanation. Question for Adie Guillen with UH Hilo.
Yes, just want to echo what...
Yes, Chair.
Yes, just want to echo what Rep. Lachica said. In terms of your graciousness in hosting us back in December when we visited your campus, you were kind enough to bring a couple of student athletes to talk about the challenges they face, specifically regarding the per diem. Could you remind us how much your Division II athletes receive per diem when they go on the road to compete?
$32. Yeah, so not that much. In fact, on almost every trip, they end up taking out of their own pocket. And so this appropriation will certainly allow us to increase that significantly.
Okay, so the $32 is supposed to cover three meals per day?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I believe the Governor did include 500,000 of this 800,000 in his budget. If you do not receive the full amount, you receive 500,000 instead of, again, the 800, how would that impact your operations?
Well, I think, you know, we, we've, we, we have corporate sponsorships, we're doing some fundraising, we do a Vulcan Challenge crowdfunding campaign every single year. You know, I think we're also working on an athletics fee right now, currently. So, you know, we'll make it work regardless, we just won't be able to raise the per diem as much as we would like to. And, you know, probably have to look at some roster size reductions as we travel as well. One of the biggest things that happened for us this year, and I included it in the testimony, but I certainly would like to, you know, say it publicly, is that the PacWest Conference, the conference that we compete in, added four additional institutions in the last 18 months. And so because of the, the larger-sized conference, our road trips now are much longer than they have been before. And with the addition of the schools, they've added six different championships, which that's a $250,000 line item right there. So this appropriation, for us, it's, it's, it's a wide divide between the 500 and the 800. We could really use the $800,000.
Thank you for the explanation, and we certainly don't want you breathing a sigh of relief if one of your teams don't make it to the championship. So thank you, thank you for sharing that.
I'm rooting for every single one of them, you know that.
Okay, thank you, Adie. Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on to the next bill. House Bill 842 relating to mental health at the University of Hawaii. This bill appropriates funds to the University of Hawaii at Manoa to establish three additional permanent mental health practitioner positions within the Division of Student Success's Counseling and Student Development Center. Up first, we have the University of Hawaii System. Kapal Olivera, testifying in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Katrina Ann Kapal Olivera. I'm the interim Vice Provost for Student Success at the University of Hawaii at Manoa. The university stands on our written testimony in support of House Bill 842, and I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have Academic Labor United. Diane DeAlana, testifying in support. Thank you for being here.
To the members of the committee, thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. Chair and Vice Chair, Representative Garrett, Representative Amato. So I am Diane, I'm a president of Academic Labor United. We are an organization that seeks to improve the living and working conditions of the graduate assistants here in UH Manoa, so we are testifying in support of this bill. So many of our JAs experience severe mental stress, and because we are consistently overworked and yet underpaid, so many JAs rely on this free service that is provided by UH Division of Student Success. And of course, because of the giant demand, and I know, we all know that the Counseling Center is doing its best to provide for, you know, 47,000 members of this community. We are very much in support of this allocation of funds for funding three more mental health practitioners. And yeah, we add our voice to strong support for this bill, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Via Zoom, Liliana Perrine, is she available? Testifying in support. Okay, please proceed. Aloha.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Liliana Perrine, and I am currently a junior at Kalahayo High School. I strongly support House Bill 842, and that will implement three additional mental health practitioners within the University of Hawaii at Manoa. As a junior who is currently college hunting, an important aspect that I am looking for in a school is how they support their students. Over the years, I have seen countless friends struggle with mental health issues and lost a peer to suicide. My peers and myself are in desperate need for people who will actively push for our mental well-being, and to have people specifically designated for that role will work wonders in our growth, education, and lives. Thank you for your time and consideration. I hope you will decide to support House Bill 842, and I'm open to any questions.
Okay, thank you, Liliana, and sorry for your loss. Members, that's all that we have scheduled to testify. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify on House Bill 842? Anyone via Zoom? Seeing none. Members' questions? House Bill 842. Okay, I have one for Ms. Olivera, please. So you note in your testimony that the recommended ratio for 1FT is roughly 1,000 to 1,500? Yet the university currently is in a situation where, unfortunately, it's 1FT to every 4,000 students. And you note that the recommended standard, from the, basically the .5FT psychiatrists you have, and the 4.5FT of psychologists are well below the recommended standard of 13 to 20, considering the student population size. We know that this is, there's a shortage across the area when it comes to mental health professionals. If the position is funded, do you have any specific strategies to try to convince these professionals who are in such high demand to come to the university?
Yeah, so we, we have identified some, some folks who are on soft money that might be interested in this new environment to apply for positions that previously did not apply. And so that's one of the strategies that we are employing, is to look at the people who might be available already in, in a system, the state system versus private practice. Because often, it's difficult when folks know that they can go into private practice, and they can have more flexible hours, and they can make their own schedule, they can work remotely. And so that's where we're starting, is to look at people who might be on soft funds that might be interested.
And what do you mean by soft funds?
So soft money, so there are some folks that have grants that they've applied for, they haven't heard back whether or not they're going to have a continuation of their grants, and so they will be seeking employment in the near future. So that's where we would start.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1170. This bill is relating to the University of Hawaii Resident Tuition Fee. Members note, this is an administration bill. This requires the University of Hawaii to grant the resident tuition fee for enrollment at any University of Hawaii campus to individuals who have graduated from a Hawaii high school and are enrolling in an undergraduate degree program under certain conditions. Up first, VP Halbert with UH, testifying in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, the university stands on its written testimony. We also have Associate Vice President Farah Marie Gomes on Zoom, I hope to answer questions if they should occur. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next, we have the Department of Education. Superintendent here or representative? Seeing none, I hope he's not at the Capitol. Members, please note that he submitted testimony in support. And up next, University of Hawaii Student Caucus, Ronald Surgis, also testifying in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I apologize, this testimony does mirror a lot of what I said in my earlier statement on House Bill 542, but let me just go over it real quick. From the student perspective, at least, that is one thing I can say. As a student, and as many other students I've talked to about it, can at least agree on that, we don't really see a downside to this. As far as we can see, this is adding a definition to a program that already exists, or I guess a technicality or a term that exists, pardon me. So for us, we don't really see any reason why this shouldn't be, you know, full send on that. But if we want to get a little bit more into the financial impact, especially when we're looking at schools for where we want to go... when we're looking at schools for where we want to go, I already did mention the idea that a lot of our students, or prospective students, would go to the mainland for cheaper housing, sometimes even cheaper education, sometimes even better education, but this would at least give us that advantage of keeping some of that here still by allowing, I guess, a bit more of a wider gap. Let's say a student wants to take a gap here, or something comes up, you know, things happen, and for whatever reason, they would no longer qualify for the original residency rate. This would give them a little bit more breathing room, an extra helping hand to allow them to come back to their state, to their home state, to the university, to continue that journey that maybe they might have been prevented. Beyond this, if you have any technical questions, I would love to redirect that to AVP Gomes, who would be on Zoom, for any more student or anecdotal questions, I'm happy to answer for that. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Okay, members, that's all that we have scheduled to testify. Is there anyone in the room wishing to do so? Anyone via Zoom? Seeing none, thank you. Members, any questions? House Bill 1170. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 1171. Members, please note, this is also an administration bill relating to the University of Hawaii Relief Funding. This bill amends the University of Hawaii Tuition and Fee Special Fund by allowing the Board of Regents to dedicate funding for student aid in direct response to an emergency or disaster as declared by the governor. Up first, we have VP Halbert with the UH System in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, the university stands on its written testimony. Again, we have Associate Vice President Ferramare Gomes to answer any technical questions, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Up next, welcome back, Ron Sturgis with the UH Student Caucus, testifying in support.
Aloha, once again, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, I'm loving the leg day. The Student Caucus is here in support of this bill, 1171, to allow the university to provide support to students impacted by emergency situations as declared by the governor. I'm going to go into a little bit of a personal anecdote, I apologize, I didn't include this in our main testimony.
Nothing to apologize for.
When the Lahaina wildfires impacted our state, specifically Maui, back in, I believe it was twenty-three August, I may have gotten the date wrong, that was when I officially joined up with my student government organization, Hollywood Community College. My advisor at the time did get boots on the ground there and was helping with some of the relief efforts, and as a student, as many other students had told me, they felt like they could be doing more. I understand this bill does not allow the students directly to assist, but in some sort of way, the comfort of knowing that we can help those who are in need of support, especially after disasters such as the Lahaina wildfires, it gives us at least a small comfort that we may not at least have been provided otherwise. To go back on track, any attempts currently to provide any sort of financial aid to students who are impacted by these wildfires would negatively impact these students and their current financial aid pathways. Furthermore, sorry, I got to double-check this one, there's honestly a lot more to be gained here than there is to lose if we were to approve this. I am not an expert on the specifics, I will tell you that, I am a student first and foremost, and most of my concerns are going to come from that perspective, and as a student, I see that being able to help our own is one of the best things that we can try to do with what we have, and I see this bill as, in that perspective, probably one of the best things we can do, bar going down there ourselves and helping picking through the rubble. Thank you very much for the opportunity to testify, and AVP Gomes is available to answer many of the technical questions.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all we have scheduled to testify. Anyone else in the room wishing to do so? Seeing none, anyone via Zoom? Seeing none as well. Members, any questions? House Bill 1171. Seeing none, we'll proceed on to the next bill, House Bill 1345. This bill is relating to teacher education. This requires the Board of Regents to grant a waiver on all tuition and mandatory fees to a resident student enrolled in the College of Education at the University of Hawaii at Manoa for the semester or term that the student enrolls in a state-approved teacher education program. Up first, we have VP Halbert with the UH System, providing comments.
Thank you again for the opportunity to testify. I'll just say a few things about our testimony. We do, of course, very much support the work we can do to encourage people to join the profession of teaching, and we're actively working as a system on a variety of avenues to do so. The concerns we have with this bill really is an assessment of the cost to the university, especially the University of Hawaii at Manoa, for covering those particular semesters where there would be a waiver of the tuition, so we would need to consider that in the context of this bill. I would say, and this isn't in the testimony, though, that if there is a way to consider this, I would encourage it to be a system-wide approach as opposed to just looking at the University of Hawaii at Manoa, but I am happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up next, Hawaii State Teachers Association, testifying in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Jason Bradshaw, representing HSTA. We stand in strong support of this measure, and would just like to emphasize that we believe this will help recruit new teachers from Hawaii, and it'd also help with our severe teacher shortage in Hawaii. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Bradshaw. Members, please also note, we have testimony in support from the Superintendent of the Department of Education, as well as the Office of, I'm sorry, comments from the Department of Education, and testimony in support from the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anyone via Zoom? Seeing none. Members' questions? House Bill 1345. If not, I have one for VP Halbert. Do you have a sense of what the cost estimate would be?
Yeah, we weren't able to put that together with our testimony, but we can look into it, so, and again, it's not, it would be wonderful to have cost-free tuition, but in this case, for just that one semester or two semesters, we would need to look at how many teachers are currently available, so we can do that.
Okay, and is it typically two semesters that students are in?
I would have to defer to the College of Education on that answer.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thanks.
Members, any other questions? House Bill 1345. Seeing none, we will move on to the next bill, House Bill 442 relating to the University of Hawaii. This bill appropriates funds to the UH System for various nursing programs. Up first, we have the University of Hawaii System, Provost Bruno, or Dean, please. There are a few names here on your testimony, so, thank you, Dean, for being here, testifying in support.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Garrett, Vice Chair Amato, and members of the House Committee on Higher Education, welcome to UH Manoa. And my name is Clementina Seriulup, Dean of the University of Hawaii at Manoa School of Nursing and Dental Hygiene. So this testimony is presented on behalf of the University of Hawaii System, including the UH Manoa School of Nursing and Dental Hygiene, UH Wasowahu, and UH Hilo School of Nursing. So basically, this request is to fund expansion of our programs in these campuses, and I'll explain briefly for UH Manoa. So for us, it's asking for the Phase III funding for the UH Manoa, UH Wasowahu collaboration, and thank you for funding the Phase II, and that's for four instructors, and also one instructor for our online RN2BS program. So I have Nicola Kanna from UH Wasowahu to provide details for their request. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Aloha, Garrett, Chair Garrett, Vice Chair Amato, and members of the House Committee on Higher Education. My name is Nicole Kanna, and I am the co-lead for the UH Wasowahu Pre-Nursing Program, here in support of HB 442, and I'm available for any questions, but I stand by our written submission.
Okay, thank you, Miss Kanna. Up next, Hawaii State Center for Nursing, Ms. Laura Reichart.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, I'm so sorry, I cannot be there in person today, I have a sick keiki with me, so, and she may disrupt, so I apologize for that. I do want to say that this is a, that the Hawaii State Center for Nursing, as we've been established in state law, has the honor of providing research, our research findings here today. We both survey nurses, as well as our nursing education programs, both public and private in our state, and through both bodies of research, we have find, we have found that there is capacity, so there are people who are interested in engaging in these educational programs, as well as a need for, in our workforce. So I just highlighted some of that, those details in my testimony, and I am available for any questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have Academic Labor United.
Aloha to the committee, thank you so much for the opportunity to testify, I'm actually here to provide comments on this specific bill. So we fully support this bill, which provides necessary funding for undergraduate nursing students, and we believe that time is now to update and expand the UH System's ability to provide quality undergraduate nursing education to answer the dire needs of the state's healthcare system. The passing of this bill would assure us that nursing education is currently a prioritized agenda item at the local and state governmental levels, and therefore, we would like to take this opportunity to present comments for this bill to emphasize to the committee and the public at large that graduate nursing education is equally critical in Hawaii. As of fall 2025, any incoming DNP students, doctor of nurse practitioner students, will no longer receive tuition waivers, and without tuition waivers, the ability of the DNP program to enroll and train skilled healthcare providers across the state will be severely diminished, as paying for full tuition will surface a huge barrier for anyone looking to enroll in the nursing graduate program. So who are the people who are in the nursing graduate program? The ninety-five percent of the people there are local, they're in Hawaii, they are currently working as registered nurses already, they serve the needs of this state, and they are pursuing their graduate education in order to more fully provide a holistic service for their patients, because they care. And so as this bill allocates 1.8 million of state funds to undergraduate nursing programs, we urge the committee to consider amending the bill to include reinstating tuition waivers for DNP students to ensure the sustainability of Hawaii's healthcare workforce. All current nursing JAs are already greatly disheartened by the UH administration's lack of budgetary priorities. The removal of tuition waivers signals a lack of their commitment to the very healthcare professionals that Hawaii needs the most. Yeah, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Seeing none, via Zoom as well. Members' questions? House Bill 442. Yes, Representative Lachica.
Question for Laura Reichart with the Center for Nursing.
Aloha.
Hey, Laura, and hopefully your keiki will get better soon. In your, in your survey, in your research, which among the number of applications, well, one, can you expound in your testimony on the number of applications versus number of seats available, and of these, which, how much, how much percent is local versus coming from mainland? That's my first question, I'll have a follow-up after that.
Thank you for that question. For the first question, when we talk about applicants and applications, I just want to clarify that the Center for Nursing surveys the schools of nursing, sorry for the disruption, related to applications. So we may and we know that many people apply for multiple schools, so, I'm sorry, the toddler, the toddler is distracting me, let me walk into another room real quick. So I can give you the information, but we do see that there is capacity for additional application, or because of the number of applications, there's capacity. As it relates to out-of-state applications to in-state applications, we actually don't collect that information. We do have information from our nursing workforce supply survey, and I'm happy to provide that to you after this hearing.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rep. Lachica. Any other questions? House Bill 442. Seeing none, members, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this earlier, but please note, we also have testimony in support on this bill from the Healthcare Association of Hawaii, the East Hawaii region of the Hawaii Health Systems Corporation, as well as Aloha Care and one individual. Okay, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 843. This bill is relating to the College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resilience, not Human Resources, as we learned. Appropriate funds for critical repairs, maintenance, demolition, design, and construction for facilities of Citar at UH Manoa establishes appropriate funds for positions within the UH for Citar. Up first, we have Dean Grewall, testifying in support.
Mahalo, Chair, Vice Chair, and the members of the committee for this opportunity to provide testimony and support, and we stand on a written testimony in support as well. But I just want to highlight briefly, there are three components to this bill, and the first one is a request for repairs for buildings and infrastructure in our Waimeanaro Research Station, and in there, we also are requesting a Phase I design dollars for building an animal science teaching lab, which is critical for our national accreditation for that program. The second section is requesting to establish a new controlled environment agriculture research facility, but it will be a facility for research, teaching, and a production farm that will produce food for our regional kitchens. Students will be involved, and therefore, workforce development is a key component of this. In addition, that it is very critical for Hawaii to build its resilience in food, so that we have a year-round food production and under situations like hurricanes and such. And the last piece is requesting stop positions for our care centers all across the state, so those positions are requested for all islands, on five different islands these stations exist, and these stations are critical and produce necessary research-based information to support all agricultural industries and also our farmers and families on those stations. Our goal with a new vision is to develop these stations as local hubs of collaborative innovation and community prosperity. So there's a change in our approach to managing those stations to increase our impact in our communities. Thank you, I'm here for question, answers.
Thank you, Dean. Up next, we have, is Metro Girl Hawaii here in person? Oh, please come up here, Dr. Keri Kokazu, Metro Girl Hawaii, testifying in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. I did submit late written testimony, so I didn't see on the website, but I stand in support of this bill and on our written testimony, but just wanted to comment specifically on the CEA, or Controlled Environment Agriculture Facility, that Dean Grewall mentioned. That's our company's job, we are the first indoor vertical farm in the state, and so we're very familiar with this field, so I really applaud the university for now coming to and asking to develop their own facility. Controlled Environment Agriculture, if you're not familiar, grows in a protected space using a fraction of the land and water, very little chemicals, just a very environmentally friendly way to grow produce for Hawaii and across the world. So I think it's time for us to add our input to this, it's a big, important field and face of climate change and limited resources, so many major universities across the country have started developing these programs, and so I think the university has a great opportunity with our unique environment to add another voice and perspective to this growing field. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Up next via Zoom, Hawaii Farm Bureau. Mr. Brian Miyamoto testifying in support. He's not present. Okay, thank you. Members, please also note, we have testimony from the Maui County Farm Bureau, also in support. Is there anyone else in the room wishing to testify? Anyone via Zoom? Seeing none, thank you. Members, any questions? House Bill 843. Yes, Rep. Hila, please proceed.
I'd only, I would just want to ask, regarding the proliferation of CRB, can you talk about to what extent Citar has been involved with the counties and the DOA to kind of address some of the infestation going on? Is Citar involved?
Citar is definitely involved, and that particular, there is a bill that's coming up, the next bill is on CRB, we can talk more about that in that. However, we have research going on, and we also have federal funding that actually focus on reducing the spread in the real world. So those staff that we have, they go out and do the treatments- So those staff that we have, they go out and do the treatments, detect, and to prevent the further spread of CRB.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Rep. Capella, go ahead.
No, please, please come back.
You don't get off that easy.
You know, I really appreciate this bill. I definitely support the work that you folks are doing. However, I do represent a neighbor island, and I have two facilities that are either within or just outside of my district that are extensions of Citar that are in extreme need of repair and support. So it's a little bit distressing to me to see a $5 million sum going to the creation of a brand-new space, which I can appreciate as well. But knowing what I've seen on the facilities that are incredibly important to protecting local farmers in my district, specifically protecting and uplifting, like coffee farmers, which are struggling with their own spaces of infestation, it's really hard to see that much money going there. I do see in here that you have, you're requesting some full-time positions for specifically extension centers, but it doesn't enumerate what extension centers specifically. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Yes, absolutely. Representative Capella, you are absolutely correct that our facilities are in dire need. We recently did a study, and the minimum estimate was $17 million for all our facilities, and that is at that time when the study was done. That said, we, I was charged as a new dean from my administration, including the president, to prioritize and to make a strategic vision, develop a vision for these facilities. So based on that, this year, we prioritize Waime Manalo and building community-engaged work there in order to address the similar situation. However, that said, on the Big Island, we have currently four separate repairs projects that are funded, one by the legislature and the others by the university, that repairs are going on. Including the coffee station, that's Kona Station, we investing $3 million in that. But I know there is additional need, because that will only address, you know, buildings that needed to be demolished and few small buildings that are being built. But we need new greenhouses there, I'm totally aware of that. So in next year, we would come for that, because I'm very aware how much money Hawaii has to offer. So we have prioritized that we will go in stages, and I have prioritized in my work that even Citar's own resources we will bring so that more stations get helped. And I will be in your district, hopefully, next year. And the positions that we are requesting, those are statewide. In those positions, there are actually over eight positions that will go to the Big Island out of the total 20 positions that we are requesting. A number of positions are service-oriented, there will be definitely a position in the corner region, and we are aware of the need, absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rep. Capella. And just to clarify, Dean, you already have a research station at Waime Manalo, so this is not a new facility, this would be a renovation with the $5 million?
Correct. So we do have a facility in Waime Manalo that we require repairs for that. But we are also acquiring Meadow Gold Land, which is another 280 acres contiguous to this. We already managing that land. That is the land that we want to redesign to have our new animal science teaching lab facility there, which is critical for our accreditation. And also expand the Go-Farm program that will train new farmers and expand our research capacity in sustainable agriculture there as well.
Okay, thank you. I was going to ask why you chose to prioritize the care center at Waime Manalo, but thanks for answering it in advance regarding the Meadow Gold Dairies acquisition. So is that deal already been closed, or are you in negotiations? What is the status of that 280 acres you just referenced?
So, we were charged last year by DLNR that the land actually went to DLNR. All the environment assessment has been done by the company, and so it's been handed over. And DLNR has given us right of access, that is also clear. But DLNR want us to present to them a design so that they can formally hand over the land to us.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Members, any other questions? House Bill 843, yes, follow-up, Rep. Capella.
Thank you, Dean. I know you mentioned animal sciences, and that's the need for prioritizing Waime Manalo. We also did a site visit, thanks to Chair Garrett, to UH Hilo, and we had the opportunity to visit some of the work that they're doing in relation to animal sciences, and specifically really large animals, like horses. And to my knowledge from that visit, it was like a one-of-a-kind, very unique program. What are you doing to work with them, since it's already in existence?
Right. So, this is another shift in Citar's vision moving forward. Our vision involves collaborative innovation. So I've already met with all the chancellors of community colleges, including the four-year programs. And I've opened arms to develop programs that we will go together. We have discussed our aquaculture program that we will go together with them, and the animal science, we have invited their program leader to discuss further as to what we can do together. The animal science lab facility here is for teaching purpose mainly, for sure, but at the same time, one of the focus areas that we're not addressing is small ruminants, sheep, goat, there is so much need, and goat also is now involved, you know, for contract grazing so that we can have fire mitigation while we also produce food. So those kind, that will be the emphasis in Waime Manalo, whereas livestock emphasis stays on Big Island with Mialani Station as well as with Hilo.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Rep. Capella, thank you, Dean. Members, any other questions? Seeing none. We'll move on to our third-to-last bill, House Bill 643, HG1, related to the Coconut Ranosaurus beetle program. This bill that came over from the Agriculture and Food Systems Committee establishes short-term management initiatives for the CRB response program, appropriate funds for activities and positions related to CRB infestation control, and this bill does currently have a defective date of 7/1/3000. Up first, we have Dean Greewall, if you don't mind coming back up, testifying in support.
Thank you again, Chair and Vice Chair and the committee members for this opportunity. This is a bill on CRB, and we have a federally-funded project right now, and we are uncertain of the funds continuing from the federal side. And two components of that project are already going to be eliminated. That one is on the canine detection of CRB, and the another one is actual field management. So this will, bill will support the work that we are already doing. Our work is highly appreciated by the Department of Agriculture as well. We are providing community trainings all around the state, but also the information about CRB. And one component is the long-term management, we want to initiate research on biocontrol of CRB. So I'm here to answer any questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up next, Department of the Attorney General. Deputy AG Park, oh, please proceed, providing comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Garrett, Vice Chair Amato, members of the committee. The Department of the Attorney General has two concerns. One is that the bill be identified as a law statewide concern, and the second is because there's a grant in the bill, we suggest including standards for the provision of the grant. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deputy AG. Up next, we have Hawaii Farm Bureau, wasn't available earlier. Not present, thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau testifying in support. Members, please also note, we have testimony in support from DLNR, the Hawaii Invasive Species Council, Councilmember Holland of the Kauai County Council, the County of Kauai Office of Economic Development, the Hawaii Farmers Union, the Big Island Invasive Species Committee, and two individuals. Members, any questions? House Bill 643.
Dean, is this the time to ask you now? Okay, so going back to my previous question, can you, I'm more curious, I mean, to add to like what kind of what Rep. Capella was saying, I know Honolulu is ground zero for CRB, but how is Citar working with our neighbor island counties as well to make sure we're not spreading that to the neighbor islands?
Right, so this particular program, I do have a researcher with me that is part of that program. He can elaborate and answer more on that. But the effort is not only in Honolulu, but on other places as well. As soon as we see something, detect something, immediately the action is taken on all our stations and all islands. We have staff that actually travels to different islands regularly for this work. I can ask, yeah, please.
Yes, Chair and members of the committee, thanks for having me up. Dr. Keith Weiser, I'm the Program Manager for the Coconut Ranosaurus Beetle Response, and we do operate statewide and with all the agencies involved, Department of Agriculture, DLNR, and the Invasive Species Committees on each island. And probably the most pertinent answer to your question is, we're currently in the process of drafting a memorandum of understanding between DLNR, University of Hawaii, and Hawaii Department of Agriculture. And we already have soft commitments within a responsibility matrix for, with new detections and ongoing management, specific for each county, who's going to take which specific actions in each of those areas, so.
I'm sorry to ask, how far out are you focused on that MOU? To be completed?
We have a matrix that assigns the responsibilities, and we have a probably 80% complete draft of exact actions that members will take. So it's not finished and signed off on, but that can be a template for each of the other, each of the other counties. So far, Maui has become the template.
So sorry to clarify, you're just drafting the template, not necessarily, people are putting pen to paper?
Yes, yeah, pen to paper and that Maui version will become a template for the other counties.
Okay. So if you were to put a timeline, like how many days or weeks would you say you folks are out from putting pen to paper of an MOU?
I'd say the biggest factor there is getting all the signatories together to decide, and so that's the biggest source of variability to finish that draft, I would guess, or finish the Maui plan, I would say another month, and that could be finished with concerted effort.
Okay. Is that something that's, I'll ask you off-line? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Rep. Keala. Members, any other questions? House Bill 643, HG1. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next bill, House Bill 441, HG1. Members note that this bill, along with the next one, both pertain to cigarette taxes. So the first one, HB 441, HG1, relating to cigarette taxes, this bill, beginning 7/1/25, increases the cigarette tax and amends the cigarette tax disposition of revenues by allocating the increase in the cigarette tax amount to the Hawaii Cancer Research Special Fund. And this bill does have a defective date of 7/1/3000. Up first, we have Dr. Ueno of the UH Cancer Center testifying in support.
So Aloha Chair and Vice Chair and the committee member. So we stand on this testimony, and we support this bill strongly. So this funding allows us to invest in our future, which is really talking about cancer-free society in Hawaii and the Pacific Island. This, to make this happen, it is very important that we invest in research, education, and academic clinical care, which will help us. So we are the only NCI-designated cancer center in this region, and this is really about impacting the outcome. And so 40% of us in this room will have cancer, okay, unfortunately. And over the course, the Cancer Center, working with the healthcare system, has reduced our cancer mortality about 25% over the several decades. We do need to achieve a higher number, which is about 50% by 2040. But to do this, we really need to invest more, and we are behind comparing to other areas. The other important thing I like to note is that massive loss of money to the continent because of certain care is not available on the island. With probably in travel, it could exceed a billion, is what I would say. And it's really not just money, but it impacts everybody's life. I would like to use myself as example, okay? So I myself, as you have probably testified a couple of times, I'm a cancer survivor. I went through stem cell transplant. This island cannot have stem cell transplant. So that means that if I was a resident seven years ago, I will be dead at this moment. So that doesn't make any sense, right? And so, and this is not just about what I receive, but there are other treatments that is not available, and there are clinical trials that's missing. So therefore, it is very important that we invest in our future, and this is what we stand for. The Cancer Center is not simply about UH system or UH Manoa, but it's really the stakeholder is you and all of us. So I hope that you could support this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ueno. Up next, Department of the Attorney General, Deputy AG Stacy testifying in support.
Good afternoon, I'm Rich Stacy, I'm a Deputy Attorney General, I supervise the Tobacco Enforcement Unit. We are in support of this bill. We do defer to University of Hawaii on a lot of the impact to the Cancer Center, we definitely agree that the Cancer Center needs the funding. We would point out, as the Chair noted, that the next bill, HB 1085, is one that is from the Governor's Package that we worked on with UH and Department of Health and Department of Taxation and Budget and Finance. That one encompasses more beneficiaries than just the Cancer Center, but it also would benefit the Cancer Center. And I'll be testifying on that next. As background, my unit was funded out of the Master Settlement Agreement in 1998. Hawaii and basically all the other states have some version of that settlement. Hawaii has received over $1.1 billion in cigarette tax stamp revenues, and over $2 billion in the actual stamps since the MSA was signed. My unit is underfunded at the moment, and also the other beneficiaries of cigarette tax revenues. So not just the Cancer Center, but the Trauma System Special Fund, the Community Health Centers, and the Emergency Medical Services Special Fund. So those are all in 1085. So we agree, the Cancer Center needs the push. We want you to take a look at 1085 also, and I think that's about it. I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Up next, Department of Health, testifying in support.
Oh, I am so short.
You're welcome to adjust the mic.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair of the Higher Education Committee and members. It's great to be back at my alma mater, and the testimonies prior resonated, I worked my way through college, both times, and had three babies, working on my master's degree, so it's good to be back. This institution has a great amount of meaning for me. Thank you so much for hearing HB 441, HG1. The Department of Health does support this bill, and it's because we want people to live long lives. And in order to do that, we need to create a really supportive environment so that people will have those options to live long lives. And yet, we know that about 1,400 people in Hawaii die every year from smoking attributable death. That's just from cigarette smoking, and it is the most preventable cause of death and disease. And the other thing too is, with the clever marketing that has happened, what we do know is that about, well, the rates are higher for smoking for native Hawaiians, 17% compared to 10% of the rest of the population, 20% for people in low economic status, and then 17, close to 18% of people with And then seventeen, close to eighteen percent of people with behavioral health conditions also smoke. So it's a problem in Hawaii and I can attest to it. I have had many loved ones die, including my dad and my best friend's dad, my cousin. And I have a cousin before age fifty who just had a stroke and is still in recovery. It also takes a financial toll, so $611 million in healthcare costs, $1.1 billion in lost productivity in Hawaii. So why support increasing the price of cigarettes? It's because we know it helps youth. Think about it, should they start? And it's a proven method in public health to prevent people from starting. And it's a proven method to help people to quit. And so from a public health perspective, we know that it will help people live longer lives. We also know that in terms of the nexus within the funds and the revenue, there is a nexus with the distribution of the dollars. So we do hope that you will pass either HB 441 or HB 1085, I'm here for both. So thank you so much for the opportunity to provide testimony.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone here from the Queen's Health Systems? Are they available via Zoom? Either J.C. McCulinnick or Jason Chang? Not present, provided testimony in support. Is the Hawaii Public Health Institute here in person? All right. Kevin Ramirez testifying in support.
Aloha and good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I'm Kevin Ramirez, the Program Manager for the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Hawaii, a program of the Hawaii Public Health Institute, here to testify in support with amendments for HB 441, HD1. We respectfully request the bill be amended to raise the tax by at least a dollar per pack to maximize potential public health benefits for youth prevention and adult cessation. More details outlining public health benefits are in our written testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of HB 441, HD1. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up next, American Cancer Society, Cancer, excuse me, Cancer Action Network, Cynthia Al, providing testimony in support with amendments.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and Committee Members. Cynthia Al, on behalf of the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network, or ACSCAN, we support the bill with amendments. Nine thousand residents from Hawaii will hear the words "you have cancer" this year. And more than two thousand are expected to die from the disease. While projections in 2025 mark an uptick in diagnoses, there is, has been a decline in deaths compared to 2024 because of institutions like the UH Cancer Center, which provides important cancer research, access to life-saving treatment, including clinical trials, and education, which play a critical role in reducing the cancer burden for our diverse population in Hawaii. Tobacco use is the number one preventable cause of cancer. And fourteen hundred adults will die from smoking this year. Please consider increasing the cigarette tax to five cents a stick or a dollar per pack. We appreciate that you'll also be hearing HB 1085. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now we're going to transition to Zoom. Up first, the Department of Taxation. Not present, providing comments.
Sorry, Chair, President.
Oh, apologies, go ahead, Dotax.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Winston Wong, on behalf of the Department of Taxation. Department stands on its written testimony, providing comments on the measure. Just want to reiterate, based on our testimony, that if the measure is passed, we do request that any stamp increases go into effect on January 1st of 2026. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have the Tax Foundation of Hawaii, providing comments. Go ahead, Mr. Yamachika.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. As we have no problem with the healthcare goals of this bill, we do have a little bit of a problem with the funding mechanism. And let me explain, number one, that by tagging these programs to the cigarette tax, it is a kind of declining proposition because, as we've seen, and I have a graph in my testimony, cigarette tax revenues decline over time. Basically, you want people to smoke less, they're doing it. What you're doing is working. So people are smoking less and it's no surprise that you're making less money from the tax because people are smoking less. The other thing I want the committee to understand is that, as our national counterpart has testified also on this bill, a cigarette tax is very regressive. What that means is that it is applied without regard to how much you're making. It's applied without regard to your ability to pay. The tax is just applied on a transaction basis. And our friends at the Tax Foundation in Washington DC have shown that the incidence of a cigarette tax would fall upon the bottom quintile of the income population ten times more heavily than those at the top, two quintiles. So please keep that in mind also as, if you would like to move this bill forward. I would be happy to answer any questions, thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Hey, thank you. Up next, American Lung Association. Not present, submitted testimony in support. Up next, Marukin Market, Mr. Yoshinaga. Not present, testimony in opposition. Members, that is all we have scheduled to testify in person or via Zoom. Is there anyone in the room wishing to testify? House Bill 441, HD1. Seeing none, anyone else via Zoom? Seeing none, either members' questions, House Bill 441. Oh, I'm sorry, could you identify yourself, please?
Hi, good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Sue. I am speaking on behalf of my husband from Marukin Market. This tax burdens low-income individuals while hurting small businesses that rely on cigarette sales. It also drives black market activity, reducing state revenue and increasing illegal sales. Also, the Hawaii Cancer Research Center was built with the goal to become a self-sustaining institution with the intention of creating cutting-edge cancer treatments. Despite their national recognition is failed to meet their goal, continuing to raise taxes to fund is not a sustainable solution. HB 441 is regressive, ineffective, and harmful to businesses. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, my apologies for mispronouncing your last name. Members, it is Travis Yoneh Shige, not Yoshinaga, my apologies. Okay, is there anyone else on Zoom wishing to testify? Seeing none, members' questions, House Bill 441, HD1. Yes, Rep Lachica.
Question for Attorney General, please, Deputy. Hi, Deputy, can you just elaborate on the Master Settlement Agreement? And in your testimony, what is, what are the requirements in which we must enforce? And what would we be held, would be the state be held liable to, should we not meet those requirements?
Thank you, I kind of dropped that on the first testimony, or when I first tried. So basically, part of the Master Settlement Agreement requires every state to have a unit like ours. And we do inspections across the state, we hit all the cigarette sellers and now we hit all the vape sellers. We have to make sure there's no illegal contraband coming in. We also get stuff coming in at the airport and at the US Postal Service. If we don't do that, then we face what's called a NPM adjustment. And what that is, is there's about a billion and a half this year that can be fought over between the tobacco companies and the states. Some states have lost, I think Pennsylvania lost over two hundred million when they lost a recent one. We have settled, but we're out of settlements. So the risk to us is if we're not funded enough, and right now we're kind of underfunded, then we could lose an arbitration. And as an example, Hawaii got forty million last year, or the year before, thirty-six million the past year, that's MSA money. If we were to go to arbitration and they were able, the tobacco industry was able to show that we did not diligently enforce the Master Settlement Agreement to keep out contraband and things like that, then they could, we would lose approximately half of our MSA. So for instance, if we did a 2025 arbitration, let's say we're getting thirty-two million, we would lose thirteen, sixteen million approximately. So that's specifically my unit. And as I noted, the other parts of the special funds are all in trouble because these were, it's been fourteen years now since the cigarette taxes have been raised. And you can imagine that the health costs to all of us have not gone down in fourteen years. So that's a big concern. Anyway, I'm rambling, but any further questions?
So for, what is the current budget? What is the current budget for your enforcement unit? And is it a hundred percent funded through the Master Settlement Funds?
So we get three hundred fifty thousand a year from the MSA until this year. So we had a bill passed last session and so we will get seven hundred fifty thousand. Recently, the personnel costs with bargaining units going up, raises going up, those have outpaced our income. So we get a chunk from the MSA money. So every year in April, Hawaii gets millions of dollars in MSA money. And we get part of that. And then the rest of our money is all cigarette tax stamp revenue. And that has dropped, and it's in my testimony, it's dropped drastically. And every year we're seeing it drop, every month we're seeing it drop. So we are underfunded at the moment and that puts Hawaii at risk for arbitration.
Just final question, Chair. Just if you can address the previous testifier's comment about what you found about, on what is AG currently finding that's on the black market? If it does, what type of enforcement do you do to try and track what's out there? Who's doing illegal sales and how to prevent it from getting into the wrong hands for those who shouldn't be using these products?
Sorry, we are, Hawaii right now is part of a group of states that are doing a huge project to crack down on the internet sales, including a lot of Chinese vapes that are unauthorized by the FDA are coming in. So we sent out eight hundred-plus letters in mid-January, warning the retailers and distributors that those are illegal. We're not seeing a lot, usually it comes in at the airport, not so many packs. But we know at the harbor, there are things coming in that we're never going to see. And that's true across all states. We have been working with the FDA to start a new program. They canceled our meeting last week, so we'll see how it goes with them. But we aren't seeing a lot of contraband because of our enforcement. That's been pretty tight. So we used to have a lot of criminal cases and we're not seeing that.
Okay, thank you, Rep Lachica. Members, any other questions? House Bill 441. If not, I have one for Dr. Ueno. Dr. Ueno, one of the testifiers earlier said that the Cancer Center was supposed to, or by design, supposed to be self-sustaining. Is that actually correct? Are any of the NCI centers self-sustaining?
That is not correct. There has, there is no single NCI-designated cancer center itself sustained. It has mixture of different funding, including usually from the state. In terms of the percentage, it's different depending on the place, the place that, how the Cancer Center is structured. So the premise of this, I hear constantly that this place has to be self-sustainable. And that is really something that's not feasible under the, particularly for us, it is a very complicated situation because we have a very unique setting working with a health system. And we do not have our own hospital. And ten years ago, that we were not, there was an agreement with a ledge as well as a hospital that we will not build our own clinic. And that puts ourselves in an even more difficult position because we do not have any downstream revenue.
Thank you for clarifying. And since you're here, we're going to transition to the next bill, House Bill 1085. Oh, sorry, Dr. Ueno, could you just, Dr. Ueno, sorry. Since you were standing there, we're going to transition to the next bill in a second. But between the two bills, House Bill 441 and House Bill 1085, does the Cancer Center have a preference?
We always prefer the larger amount of money.
Which, for the record, is a next bill.
So that is our position, we support both. And if you're willing to give us both, we will take both.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ueno. Members, any other questions? House Bill 441, HD1. Seeing none, we'll transition to the last bill of the agenda. House Bill 1085, HD1, relating to taxation. As previously noted, this is an administration bill. This bill increases the tax rates for cigarettes and little cigars beginning 1/126, amends the disposition of tax revenues to certain non-general funds, starting from FY 2627, with the excess carrying over to the general fund, and expands the disposition of tax revenues to the non-general funds to include all tobacco product taxes. Repels obsolete historical tax rates, and this has a defective date, members, of 7/13,000. Up first, sorry, Dr. Ueno, I should have asked you to stay up here as well. Obviously, testifying in support.
Yes, thank you, Chair and Vice Chair and the Committee Member, Mahalo, for the opportunities. So we stand on this testimony and it is the same reason that we really like to make a difference. One has already testified by the other bill that one is to reduce the cigarette smoking, to reduce the cigarette-related smoking. But in addition to the investment to the Cancer Center and to the general community about making a difference is what we have in agenda about. So yes, so yes, we do support this bill.
Okay, thank you. Up next, Department of the Attorney General. Deputy AG Stacy, testifying in support.
Thank you, I was trying to extend my parking since it expires in a few minutes. But it's fine. So again, this is similar, this is the one that is Governor's Package. We did work on it, basically in last session, a version of the UH1 you heard, which is 441, was heard and it morphed into something where they were trying to include vape taxes. So what we did is as soon as session ended, we started having meetings with all the stakeholders. We did with Dotax, University of Hawaii, Department of Health, and Budget and Finance. We had a lot of meetings and we were trying to figure out how we can fix it. So Act 62 was passed two sessions ago. And it went into effect January of 2018, I mean, 2024, as far as taxing vape products, which had never happened before. But what it didn't do is it didn't allocate any of those tax revenues toward the beneficiaries, such as like the Cancer Center. So those have all been going to the general fund, which is great. But the beneficiaries of, you know, the cigarette tax revenues, we wanted to, and the legislature seemed to want to last session, make that apply here also. So this would have a bigger pool of revenue. And, you know, we had an intern from University of Hawaii, who's now at Department of Health, and we were talking to him the other day, he said, oh, it's not really e-cigs now, it's pouches. So, and I've seen it, I've seen it on the Maui basketball thing, there was a big banner ad across saying that one of the pouches, so these are nicotine pouches. Not really regulated, but this version would tax them. And it's kind of like I used to represent Narcotics Enforcement, where they always change drugs, like bath salts, and we're always trying to keep up with them. So this would keep all those vape products, pouches, as tobacco products. They move into the tax structure and then the beneficiaries would get it. And then we also, we strongly support it, we want cigarette taxes raised. It's been, like I said, fourteen years. And we wish that you pass it. Available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Up next, Department of Health.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the-
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Lola Irvin, representing Dr. Kenny Fink for the Department of Health, and I am so glad that my colleagues have come before me to explain the structure of this bill. So the reason Department of Health is involved is because this is a proven public health strategy. Increase the price of the tobacco products, and youth will, are less likely to start, and adults will quit. We're also here to help people quit. So I think Deputy Attorney General Rich Stacy talked about the tobacco settlement dollars. So 12 and a half percent go to the Tobacco Prevention and Control Trust Fund. So if you have seen the ads to encourage people to quit smoking, that's what it's paying for. And if you've met people at the community health centers who are getting in-person support to quit smoking or to prevent youth from quitting, that's what it's paying for. And it's all evaluated, we do continuous improvement, and it goes to every county, every island. And so we make every effort to make sure that the entire state and everybody benefits from this. So we're here. Should this pass, we're here to support people to quit smoking because it's the best thing to do. And we did participate, and we did get acknowledgement from the beneficiaries that they would also support this. So we thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony and support.
Okay, thank you. Up next, Hawaii Public Health Institute. Testifying in support.
Aloha and good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Kevin Ramirez, again, the Program Manager for the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Hawaii, which is a program of the Hawaii Public Health Institute, here to testify in support for HB 1085, HD1. Raising taxes on tobacco products is a proven strategy to help reduce tobacco product use and dependence, and can be a benefit for public health. Recent polling shows strong voter support. According to an independent poll conducted by Ward Research on behalf of the Coalition, 78% of registered Hawaii voters support an increase in cigarette taxes, and 89% feel that it is important for the state to dedicate part of its tobacco tax revenue to support tobacco prevention and cessation programs. Populations that continue to experience higher rates of smoking would be the primary beneficiaries of these prevention and cessation activities, helping to provide resources needed to quit smoking and to help cut the high costs associated with tobacco use. We humbly ask that a portion of the proposed tobacco tax revenue be dedicated to support tobacco prevention and cessation programs. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of HB 1085, HD1. Mahalo.
Thank you. Up next, ACS Cancer Action Network, Ms. Al, testifying in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chairs, and Committee Members. Cynthia Al with American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, or ACS CAN. I don't want to repeat what I said in, for House Bill 441, but I want to thank the committee for considering increasing the cigarette tax by a dollar per pack or five cents per stick. The increase of cigarette taxes by a dollar will help youth from starting and to help adults quit. The Cancer Center plays an important role to help the people of Hawaii reduce the cancer burden in the state, and especially for our diverse population. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll transition to Zoom, starting with DOTAC, providing comments.
Well, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Winston Wong, on behalf of the Department of Taxation. The department stands on its written testimony offering comments on this bill, which is an administration measure. We also note that aside from the defective date, the department can administer the measure as written with the proposed effective date of January 1, 2026.
Okay, thank you. Up next, Tax Foundation of Hawaii, Mr. Yamachika, providing comments.
Thank you very much, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. Our concerns, again, are with the funding mechanism. We do note, as we did in the prior measure, that the tobacco tax generally is declining over time, and that's, again, reflective of what the Attorney General said. It also is disproportionately impacting the lower sectors of the population, in as much as a 10-to-1 ratio as I mentioned for the other bill. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Up next, did the American Lung Association join us since the last bill? Seeing none, they provided testimony in support. Up next, Americans for Tax Reform in opposition. Not present, thank you. I believe that is all that we have registered to testify. Is there anyone in the room wishing to do so? House Bill 1085, HD1. Seeing none, anyone else via Zoom? Seeing none either there. Members, questions? House Bill 1085, HD1. I think everyone's ready to go to the Punahou Carnival. Okay, with that, before we recess, I just wanted to acknowledge in the front row the presence of Josh Faoulmiina, who's the latest member of the Board of Regents. Thank you for joining us today. Okay, with that recess. Okay, members, thank you for having an awesome road trip today, field trip to the University of Hawaii campus. Again, thank you to the team at the University of Hawaii for hosting us in this beautiful room here that the Board of Regents just utilized yesterday. We're now going to transition into decision-making for today's agenda. Again, we have 11 bills up for today. First bill, House Bill 542, relating to the University of Hawaii Promise Program. We are very compelling testimony for students who joined us today on the benefits of this program. As I noted earlier, you know, I'm not ready to concede narrowing the scope of this program. I'd like to continue to see if we can help as many students as possible receive a high-quality education here at the UH. So with that, you know, I'll do, I do note that the bill already contains a blank appropriation, so the only suggested amendment is a defective date of 713,000 to facilitate further discussion. Members, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please, HD1.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 542, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Ebslin excused. Representative Capella.
Aye.
Representative Keela.
Aye.
Representative Lechika.
Aye.
Representative Olds.
Aye.
Representative Sayama.
Aye.
Representative Woodson. Representative Marooka excused. Representative Souza.
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Next bill, House Bill 840. This is relating to University of Hawaii athletics. You know, we heard from two ADs today, AD Mann, and thank you for joining us in person, as well as AD Giann from UH Chilo. We know there's historically been some funding challenges with the athletics program, but you know, I would like to see this bill proceed. The recommendation for the HD1 is to blank out the appropriations that are currently listed, along with the FTE amount, and we will add a defective date of 713,000 to facilitate further discussion. Members, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, and I'm sorry, and we will note, ask the Finance Committee through the committee report to consider the, the position counts that are currently specially funded. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please, HD1.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 840, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representatives Ebslin and Marooka for the remainder of the hearing. Are there any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Seeing none. Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. Next bill, House Bill 842, relating to mental health at the University of Hawaii. This is a bill that appropriated monies and three FTEs specifically for the Manoa campus. We know this is an acute need on every single campus, not just in college, but also in high schools and below. The recommendation here, just to keep the discussion going, is to do an HD1 with blanking out the FTE counts and noting that the bill already has a blank appropriation. We would also like to add a defective date of 713,000 to facilitate further discussion. Members, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please, HD1.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 842, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any members voting no? Any members with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Next bill is House Bill 1170, administration bill relating to the University of Hawaii resident tuition fee. I just want to commend the university for making it easier for local students to apply. They recently waived their application fee. My daughter went through this, experienced herself, and got a response back in a day. So I know the UH is trying to encourage local kids to stay here and attend the university. The testimony was, let's see here, excuse me, I'm sorry, just noting that there is no appropriation or anything else in that sense, so the recommendation here is an HD1 with a defective date of 713,000 to facilitate further discussion. Members, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please, HD1.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 1170, Chair's recommendation passed with amendments. Any members voting no? Any members with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. Next bill, House Bill 1171, relating to the University of Hawaii relief funding. Let's hope the university never has to issue this kind of student aid-type disaster response, but I commend the university for wanting to do so. Right now, it's certainly not fair to punish students a second time by having this count against their financial aid allocation. The bill does not have any appropriations, so what we'll do is just make a defective date of 713,000 to facilitate further discussion. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please, HD1.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 1171, Chair's recommendation passed with amendments. Anyone voting no? Anyone with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair and members. Next bill, House Bill 1345, relating to teacher education. Members, you'll recall this is the bill that would require the Board of Regents to grant a waiver on the tuition for the semester that students are enrolled in a state-approved teacher education program, noting the testimony from the UH concerned about the possible cost impacts. You know, one of the things that I pledged to the other chancellors outside of the Manoa campus is that I wanted to make sure that, you know, we did not operate with a Manoa-specific framework. So the suggestion here is to pass an HD1, including the University of Hawaii at Chilo as well as UH West Oahu. And we will reflect that, just to make sure that any four-year college, any student enrolled in a four-year college with an education program is eligible for this, noting, you know, the budget impacts are not clear at this point, but we will seek that information from VP Halbert. So with that, we will also include a defective date of 713,000 to facilitate further discussion. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please, HD1.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 1345, Chair's recommendation passed with amendments. Any members with? Voting no. Any members with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. Next bill, House Bill 442, relating to the University of Hawaii. This bill appropriates funds to the UH system for various nursing programs. This bill was introduced to make the UH whole from the amounts that, of their budget that did not make it into the governance budget, but was approved by the Board of Regents. We're all very familiar with the acute nursing shortage here. We want to support the UH and other community colleges in helping stock that pipeline. Let's see here, the recommendation for the HD1 is to blank out the appropriation amounts and ask the Finance Committee to consider that appropriate amount at the next hearing, and also include a defective date of 713,000 to facilitate further discussion. Members, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please, HD1.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 442, Chair's recommendation is passed with amendments. Are there any members voting no? Any members with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair and members. Next bill, House Bill 843, relating to Citar. This is a bill in three sections, sets up a, the funding, 5 million for the Waimea Nalo Research Station, 6 million for the Magoon Research Station for the controlled environment agriculture, as well as funding for 20 positions. Want to thank Dean Greewell for being here and about a month ago taking me on a visit. I saw Magoon Research Center for myself. Clearly, you know, if we're serious about food security, we need a strong and thriving Citar to support that. And when I walked through the campus, with all due respect, Dean, I was pretty mortified at the condition, and I know that's not unique to Magoon. And I appreciate Rep. Pal's concerns about funding for other areas, too. And hopefully, this is just the first step, and we look forward to supporting you, Dean, in that, in that sense. So that being said, you know, just to facilitate further discussion and to ask Finance Committee to figure out the appropriate amounts for these three areas, we will be blanking those amounts out and adding a defective date of 713,000 to facilitate further discussion. Members, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please, HD1.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 843, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any members voting no? Any members with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair and members. Next bill is House Bill 643, HD1. This is relating to the Coconut Rhinoceros Speedo Program. We did receive comments or suggested changes from the Attorney General's office. I did check in with the Chair of the Agriculture and Food Systems Committee, who gave prior concurrence to adopt their recommendations. So members, just as a reminder, what the AG suggested that we do is to add a paragraph stating that this issue is that of a statewide concern. This just clarifies any possible concerns over UH autonomy and the legislature's role in this. The AG also did provide recommended language in their testimony regarding setting up grant standards to allow fund, money to flow into the community for this. We did take a look at their section, so I just want to say number four is probably not necess, is not necessary, so we will delete that section out of their testimony. Other than that, I'll note that the bill already has a defective date and that the bill, the appropriation amounts are currently blank. Members, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please, HD2.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 643, HD1, Chair's recommendation passed with amendments. Are there any members voting no? Any members with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. Two more bills to go. House Bill 441, HD1, relating to cigarette taxes. For this bill, it did come over from the Health Committee. I did confer with the Health Chair, Chair Takayama. In this bill, it currently includes the tax amounts. I did check in with the Finance Chair, Chair Yamashita, earlier today. The recommendation, or the request of us was to amend the bill, again, prior concurrence from Chair Takayama, to blank out the cigarette tax amounts and allow the Finance Committee to make any adjustments as necessary. So we will do that. Other than that, I will note that this bill already has a defective date of 713,000. So again, the only recommended changes here are to blank out the suggested tax amounts. Members, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please, HD2.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 441, HD1, Chair's recommendation passed with amendments. Any members voting no? Any members with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair and members. Last bill, House Bill 1085, HD1, relating to taxation. As Dr. Ueno noted, this does provide a larger pool of funding by capturing e-cigarette and other types of tobacco products. We will also recommend an HD2 for this, similarly deleting out the general fund amount, or the, blanking out the appropriations, noting that it already has a defective date. And the Chair's inclination at this point is to pass this bill over to Finance as well and ask Chair Yamashita to figure out which is the appropriate vehicle to meet the intended purpose here. So members, with that, House Bill 1085, HD2. Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on HB 1085, HD1, Chair's recommendation passed with amendments. Are there any members voting no? Any members with reservations? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, with that, everyone, thank you for joining us today on the beautiful campus of UH Manoa. This hearing is adjourned.